All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 19, 2025, regular meeting of the Township of Montclair Planning Board in accordance with the New Jersey Open Publics Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and by sending a copy to the newspaper designated by the Township for notices. This meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live and will be available on demand on YouTube. This meeting is a quasi-judicial proceeding, meaning that the Board has powers and procedures resembling a court of law, and we're obligated to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from them in order to provide the basis of an official action. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the Board may legally consider when reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Fire exits are to my right, which is your left, and also in the back of the room where you entered. And the first thing is roll call.
Mayor Baskerville. Mr. Borshoff is excused. Mr. Campbell is excused. Mr. Graham said he'll be late. Mr. Ian Wally.
Here.
Councilor Lockman. Mr. Filais is excused. Ms. Willis.
Here.
Mr. Niemann.
Here.
And Chair Brodak.
I'm here.
Okay.
All right, well, we do have a quorum, so that's good. If anybody is here for Application 2915, which is 117 Watchong Avenue, or Application 2919, which is 225 Loraine Avenue, both of those applications will be carried into the June 16 meeting, so they won't be heard tonight. They'll be carried to the June 16 meeting with no further notice required. Next up is the approval of the minutes.
And I did not receive any comments on the minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Okay, and that brings us to the continued public hearing of the Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. Sure, Mr. Nees.
Resolution.
Oh, yeah, so I did. Never mind. We have a resolution for Application 2910152 High Street. Sorry, I was just getting to the main event here.
That's fine. I just, I don't, I don't know if you all got or saw the email that I sent, but over the weekend after Chair Brodak reviewed the proposed resolution, he pointed out that in Condition Paragraph 11, it indicate, the resolution indicates that there will be an easement or license agreement, but it did not mention the fact that there would be a gate. And that was a comment in the, in the margin of the resolution that I got back from Chair Brodak. And as I wrote this afternoon, I did review the tape, I wasn't here that, that evening, I did review the tape, and in fact, Chair Brodak mentioned specifically that there would be a gate. So I would ask that when the resolution is memorialized, if the Board determines to do that, that the notion of a gate be added to that Condition Paragraph 11.
So can I make a motion to accept the resolution as amended with the adding the gate to the condition?
Sure.
Okay, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Now, moving on to the continued public hearing. I would wait till the end if it's, the continued public hearing of the Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. And so, we were here, I think it was two weeks ago, to hear public comment and to really start the public hearing, which we got through all of the public comment portion. So the public comment was closed at our last meeting on this topic, and so we are at the Board deliberation stage, that's what we started at the last meeting and what we're going to continue here. I would hope that we can get through the entire housing element tonight, in a way I think we have to, because the council, I believe, is meeting on June 3. I checked it again before I came tonight, and I'm looking at Councilor Lockman, and she's agreeing with me. So I think this is our one, our final meeting to move this forward if we're going to be on time, which I would recommend that we do. So I know there's a lot to go through, and it's really up to all of us to express any concerns, questions, and to deliberate. And with that, I don't know, Ms. Tally, do you have any introductory remarks?
I did not prepare any introductory remarks. I just want to say that I received comments from Mr. Niemann. I don't think I even included that in, in the packet, it was really a discussion about the definition of uses. But I did get detailed comments from Mr. Campbell and from Councilor Lockman, and my response to those comments were included in the packets that were submitted, as well as changes to the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, which really included, I'll summarize, what those changes were. Emphasizing the fact that we're using our credits to meet our affordable housing obligation for the Fourth Round, adding some additional information on some of the tables in the text of the plan, those were added. Some corrections were added, referencing statewide initiatives such as the Senior Freeze Program and the State New Jersey Program are discussed in the plan as programs at the state level to help keep housing affordable. And I did add a section emphasizing that a lot of the, several of the proposals do reflect transit-oriented developments, those were the proposals where redevelopment may occur within a half a mile of our train station, that was identified in the revised plan. Let's go through my changes here. I did add a tape, a table showing the list of permitted uses in residential zone districts that came as a request particularly from the mayor, she wanted additional information on that, and really.
Can I ask you a question? What does the A mean?
Accessory.
Accessory, okay.
Accessory use.
A comment, you might want to say what those letters mean?
Yeah, okay, that's, that's a good idea. And those were really, I did go, those are most of the changes. I think I had already made the changes in here that from, that, that these are actions that the Planning Board should take. I know Chair Brodak, you think those should be changed to actions that the Planning Board could take. So those were the comments that I received and how the plan was, and I haven't made those changes yet, because I heard that from Chair, I think it was over the weekend or today.
Yeah, it might have been yesterday.
Yeah.
But it was just, it was in keeping with that theme that here's a list of options that the Township could pursue.
Yes.
And that's why I thought the word "could" kind of reflected the overall tenor of the document more than "should."
What page is that, that you're looking at?
There's several of them.
Oh, so you're.
So just kind of generally in all of the options towards, you know, the, the middle and the end.
Yeah, it's not something we are requiring or anyone to do, these are just kind of a compilation of potential things that we could do.
Correct, like that overarching statement that's there, just to make it consistent. Let me see, I think the first one I saw was on page 56 of the PDF.
Okay.
You know, for instance, Wildwood Track, you know, this property, it's written, the property should be rezoned.
Yes.
And, and I'm thinking, in keeping with the theme that this Board's discussed, it should say it could be rezoned.
Yeah, because, you know, some of us may not sign on to it if it looks like it's a mandatory change.
Right.
Yep.
So that's it, that's where we are tonight.
Okay. Who wants to start?
I don't want to start.
Mr. Ian Wally.
I don't have any comments with respect to specific changes, because I think it's been passed through the filter and comments, you know, were great and so forth. But spoke last time about the, the subsidy, you know, the amount of money that a developer would be able to pay and not provide a housing unit when it's going from 190 to 250 or something.
Right.
And I was, you know, I learned that it's equivalent to a subsidy. And, you know, but thinking about that, it's a, it's not a fair trade, because if the developer builds a unit, Montclair gets a unit of affordable housing. If they just pay the subsidy, we don't get an affordable unit. So, because more subsidy, other things need to happen. So what I would recommend the council do is that, and I know we're recommending that the affordable housing number, the percentage go from, excuse me, 20% to 25, but we haven't even achieved close to 20% historically. So it might be better if you keep it at 20, but do it and have the developers provide the units. Don't pay the subsidy.
Right.
Because if you, if they provide the unit, we get the housing unit that's affordable. If they pay for it, we don't have an affordable housing unit.
Right now, we don't give them the option to pay the subsidy, right? The way our ordinances are written right now, they have to provide those. The only time we allow them to, it's called the payment in lieu, they have to get a special exception from the Planning Board to allow them to do the payment in lieu. And in my 15 years here, we've only done that once. So what happens is, the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance requires them to build them on-site, and the subsidy, that payment in lieu, we, if there's a fractional unit, we use that to assess the fractional cost for that fractional unit.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, then I guess I do have a comment, because I, I thought that it was either-or, I'm sorry.
It was what?
I thought that in reading, you know, the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance language on 47, I thought it was either-or. I didn't know that only in certain instances.
Right.
Is the subsidy allowed.
That might have been my paraphrasing of the IZO, but the IZO is structured so that they cannot pay, only as a special exception determined by the Planning Board. Because you're right, it is more difficult to actually build the units than it is to just pay, pay your, pay the subsidies.
But, I mean, I know, I asked this question, and I'm still a little hazy on it. So let's take, for example, Lackawanna Plaza, you have 20% affordable housing, let's not even talk about the workforce housing.
I, can you speak up a little?
Oh, sorry, yeah, we, it has 20%.
Right.
Affordable housing requirement, but I was also thinking that you could say, hey, let's put no affordable housing in Lackawanna Plaza, take the fee, which you told me was $15 million, and use that in other parts of town to address affordable housing needs, whether it's, you know, buying or building or, or repairing or whatever. And then you would get a market rate, totally market rate building for, you know, for perpetuity, where our taxes are then determined on market rate rather than the discounts that are given for the rents for workforce and low income, and the town would benefit from getting higher taxes. They'd get this money upfront, they could use it for home core buildings or whatever. And you told me it would be hard to spend $15 million, but.
And I was, I'm correct, it would be hard to spend $15 million. And yes, right now.
But is that true? Is that what I'm reiterating? Is that a fact? Is that the way it works?
They can only do that if the Planning Board grants them a special exception. Okay? Normally, they, all the, some developers come in, if they have one or two, they all go, well, let me, I'll just pay the subsidy, I'll just pay the, we've always say, according to our, our ordinance, you cannot pay that, you have to provide it, you use that to, to calculate the, the fractional. One developer came in and asked for relief from that requirement, that was one of the projects on North Willow Street, the Planning Board granted the relief, it was a variance from our requirement to allow him to pay. So that's the only time that, that has happened, other than using it to pay the fractional.
But what about, I thought Sylvan Place as well?
That was, that was the one situation where, it was a project on North Willow Street, where he asked, because of the size of the units, he'd rather make a contribution to create two units offsite.
So the possibility of what I'm describing exists.
It does exist.
Exists, so here we are in a town.
It has to be a special exception.
Right, okay, but, you know, we're, Montclair is financially stressed, and it will continue to be financially stressed because of our, our budgets are under a lot of pressure from the public safety contracts, the need to do, to fix this building or replace this building, the need to replace the, or fix up the police department, the option now we have to buy, perhaps buy Cody Field, would be terrible to let that go, the infrastructure problem, so we have a very stressed budget. So I, my, my lookout is for the people in the middle, who, property taxes are going to be affected by these things coming down the, the pike here. So I, I'd like to see us be able to generate revenue. And we have no obligation to, to, to build affordable housing.
There's, this is a classic example of balancing public interests.
Yeah, I know.
And that's, that's what, you, the Planning Board are charged.
Or our council here, I mean, it's harder for me to think of what we should be doing here, but go ahead, sorry, interrupted.
I'm just focusing on tonight's meeting.
Yeah.
And on the, on the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, okay?
I agree with you, Janice, you are, but that's why I had a question for you. Why isn't there anything, and it's the housing element, it's not just the Fair Share Plan, it's, you're describing the housing element for our town, and yet you don't discuss what the cost of this housing is to the town anywhere. It's just, we want to do this, we want to do that, we want to do the other, but what's the cost of that?
And I think I tried to explain that to you in the email, you can't just give a generic cost factor to a housing element that proposes affordable housing in so many different forms, because there's different costs associated with an inclusionary development versus 100% affordable housing development on a house of worship. So you almost have to, if, if that's of your concern, you have to evaluate that on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I'm not looking for numbers in the plan, I'm looking for some kind of discussion in the plan that says, you know, we have, by having affordable housing, if you use public land, there's a value to that land that you're giving up, or you're foregoing, or you're contributing to, you know, your affordable housing.
Again, this is, and I also responded, it's very difficult to put a monetary value on a function that advances the public good.
Yeah, I, I, I think using any piece of land for any type of use imposes costs on the, the broader community in any number of ways. And so, there would be a significant cost to Montclair becoming a community that's less economically deggrous, right? And, and the limiting of affordable housing development and, and efforts being taken, and the limiting of efforts to ensure that a, an affordable housing stock, both capital A, affordable A, and lowercase affordable housing stock, is, is, is less available in Montclair is going to impose, I would argue, as many if not more costs, perhaps not in a, a, a way that is calculated mathematically in the municipal budget, right? But to our overall civic health and wellness and everything beyond that, right? Like, like, I think that's fundamental, right? And, and it would make Montclair less desirable, and that lack of desirability would then lead to direct costs on the municipality.
That's all supposition.
And I think it's supposition to some extent to say that there's a cost, quote-unquote, to the affordable housing units, because take Lackawanna Plaza, right? Like, the, the plan that was drawn up was done specifically intending to say, we want to incorporate affordable housing into this development, right? We want to incorporate market rate housing, like, there was intentionality there, right? And, and the plan you would come to for that piece of land, unconstrained by the desire for affordable housing, could be an entirely different plan, right? And the, the plan you would come to for that property under different zoning could be entirely different plan, right? Like, there's so many factors that play into the decisions we make about the land we have, that to, to say it's a simple straightforward, if you scratch out the affordable housing number here, and suddenly it's worth more, and suddenly we have $15 million up here, like, I don't think it's that simple.
That is a fact, though.
I mean, there's no, there'd been no financial plan ascribed by the Township yet, so I don't know that that's a fact, right? Like, like, we, the, whatever agreement has to be, or is to be made financially with regards to Lackawanna Plaza is not in effect yet.
We're too late now.
Yeah, like, it's in progress.
It's in progress.
Yeah.
But I'm, I was just using that as a hypothetical.
Right.
That it is a fact, that if you don't have affordable housing in a 300-unit building, you're going to get more rent rolls, therefore you're going to get more property taxes.
Well, no, that's not necessarily true. Won't that be compensated for with the $15 million payment he'll be required to make to the Township?
You tell me, I don't know.
I don't know, I haven't done that analysis, but it's not.
I thought the $15 million was a development fee.
Well, maybe.
We did a fiscal, we did do a fiscal impact analysis for that project.
Right. I'm, I'm just hypothetically using it.
I don't know if you've seen it.
No, no, I, I'm not using that, I'm just calling out certain elements of, that we, I think, in a housing element, you need to look at what the cost is. I mean, and then people might be really happy, oh, that's good, that's, that's fine.
Do we do that when we talk about creating parks?
I don't know.
We don't.
Yeah, but this is different.
Well, maybe if I could tie this.
Yeah.
A little bit more directly to the document, and maybe try, and maybe try to get to the point that, that I think you're raising in part, and forgive me if I get this wrong, but, you know, this, this reminds me of, of a discussion several meetings ago we had when we first were going through this, and, and we talked about the need to balance these things, and that it's not all one, and that any of these decisions that we, that are made based on this plan, there's other, there's other things that need to be considered, right? We talked about stormwater for the Wildwood properties, for instance, you know, and whether we keep open space on the New Street properties. There's a balance here, and maybe we just need to be more explicit in our executive summary that says, before any one of these is chosen, we need to look at, you know, the, the other opportunity costs, the other, I think I used the phrase knock-on effects, that I wouldn't put that in the document, but that's.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm talking about. There's some place in here it has to say, there, you're, there's a cost to all of this, and.
There's costs and opportunity costs, right?
Cost and oppo, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're seeking a balance.
Yeah.
But, okay, that's fair, but as the document stands now, there's really nothing that talks about the cost of affordable housing, which, I mean, I just asked you to throw in a paragraph or something about that, because I think it's, it's a valid point.
I, I think, I think the, the issue I would have with that is it, it focuses on one type of land use and ascribes particular costs to that land use without giving the same scrutiny to every other type of land use in town, right?
Because it's redevelopment that gives us the most affordable housing, that's why I was kind of focusing on that.
Sure, but one factor that, that could also be considered, for example, is that dense residential development, like apartment buildings, on a dollar-for-dollar basis are far more efficient to municipal services than single-family homes spread out over acres and acres of land, right?
And sustainable, yeah.
Right, and, and so, I would say it's just as, as reasonable to include a, a statement saying that Montclair's current significant use of single-family zoning encourages sprawled development that is a greater cost to the municipality than denser uses of land. And like, I think that's just as valid a point to make.
Not really, because there's not that much developable land, for you could put a sprawl of, you know.
I mean, there's not that much developable land, because it's all single-family zoned and, and already in use, right? But that's an artificial, that, that use is perhaps artificially maintained by the zoning that has been imposed on that land, right? And so, that's just as much a cost on the municipality. And rezoning parts of the municipality could unlock millions of dollars in economic value, right? Which would then be accounted for on the municipal budget rolls. And, and, and so to say that affordable housing is the only type of land use that has a cost, which specifically calling it out would do, I don't think that's fair. And I don't think that's the, the, the best use of valuable, valuable real estate in our Fair Share Housing Plan.
Well, I disagree, okay? So, disagree.
But maybe, maybe what we can add is a sentence that says, there's a cost to all of these, and they should be evaluated before being enacted. Just simply.
So if we come in with a proposed, an applicant comes in with an applica, with a proposal to put 100% affordable housing, we're going to require them to do a fiscal impact analysis?
I didn't, I didn't say that necessarily, I'm, I'm just saying.
Or, or do we do that? I'm trying to get an, an idea of how that would be implemented.
I'm curious, Arthur, what does the municipal land use law say the, the role of the Planning Board is? Like, like, what is, because I imagine it says something similar, that the Planning Board's job is to consider the impacts of development on the municipality or something to that effect, like, I would imagine.
I, I'm not sure what you're asking, because the municipal land use law speaks to the health, the welfare, safety, and issues like that, and this board is the expert in planning. I, I'm not sure what you're asking about.
I think you, you, you got it where you said the, the land use law deals with health, safety, welfare, and I think balancing the interests of the community is included in that health, safety, and welfare. And so I think we may be even able to just reference the municipal land use law, which tasks the Planning Board with considering and accounting for the health, safety, welfare, whatever the specific quote may be, in determining applications, right? Like, including the holistic purview already tasked to us.
I wouldn't say it's a holistic purview, right? Because part of, you know, part of the things that, when we're considering applications, we don't get into a lot of times, is, are the pipes big enough to support water, sewer, things like that? Because I think it's because the, the lots are already zoned in a certain way that the, I don't want to say inference, but, isn't it that, because certain things are already zoned that way, that it's able to handle sometimes traffic, infrastructure? Is that not, not the case? I thought.
Yeah, no.
Particular kinds of zoning has, leads to certain effects.
Mm-hmm.
For example, one family zone, as, as Jake is pointing out, you, you don't expect, you know, throughways running through those areas.
Right.
So it, it defines a certain style, if you will, of all kinds of things, of infrastructure, traffic, the kind of housing stock in the area, all of those things. So yes, to answer your question, at least it does, I can, the zoning does have an effect on all of those things. I'm not sure that that answers your question, though.
I'm just thinking back to other applications where there's certain things that I remember hearing that, well, it's, it's, since the Township Council zoned it this way, that that, you know, there was some, something to the effect that, you know, so if somebody's putting in that sim, that exact type of development, that the implication is that infrastructure can already carry that, that type of use.
It.
And I don't know if this is a point we really need to belabor on either, now that I'm just saying it, but.
Sometimes, sometimes what lawyers will say is that, well, look, the, the council zoned this in a particular fashion, and therefore they must have contemplated that this is the kind of thing that would occur in that zone. So lawyers do that, and I've seen that many, many, many times. If that's what you're driving at.
That sounds about right.
Yeah.
Is that we, you know, we're not going to go recalculate all of those different pieces of, of an application, or, or make any applicant go through that level of scrutiny, so I don't think we would here, but maybe it's more of a qualitative, maybe it's, this, this document as a, as an element to the master plan is really providing that guidance to whomever's making these decisions.
Well, not that I want to complicate this, but.
But why not?
Implicit in this ultimate document is the cons, are the concepts that this board is considering the health, the welfare, and the safety, and the other factors that the MLUL ascribes to what it is that you're doing. Part and parcel of that may be the cost that, that Councilor Lockman is trying to drive at, because that's just, it goes with the territory, so to speak. So it could be implicit.
I guess it's not the territory of this board, though, that's, I think, the point you're making, it's the territory of the council, and since I'm kind of on the council.
To do what? Let's be clear.
To care, to care about the fiscal impact of housing. It's not so much the, the concern in this housing plan, clearly, strictly speaking.
Strictly speaking, I would agree with you on that.
Yeah, but it is, you know, as a counselor here, it's something. Yeah, but it is, you know, as a counselor here, it's something I have to weigh.
Sure.
And I should take off my counselor hat and keep my, my beanie on for the planning board. That's it.
I find that a little weird.
It seems to me that one of the concerns.
Carol, I can't hear you.
I have it on.
Can you move it closer to you?
I've got to move a little nearer to it. It's on.
Yes, it's on.
Okay. It seems to me that the question we really have to deal with as, as the planning board is, the 20% a reasonable amount for us to be targeting? And I, to me, at this time, I think it's a reasonable target, um, and therefore, um, I was concerned to, we look at the fact that there are buildings that have already been built. The 40-year is just coming to a close, uh, on some of them, and that at that time, when new buildings are built, sometimes what the, what the request is, is that we will just extend that 40 years, we'll let, let that begin again, rather than to put the, the housing into the new development. And my, I tend to favor that we, as much as possible, make sure that there is in the new development affordable housing.
Right.
As opposed to, well, we'll just keep, keep the old and let that one go. And then I have a question for us, and that is, is that, given that we have something new in Montclair, which is the rent control, when that building that was built 40 years ago becomes open again, isn't that also meaning that all the houses in that now have to be rent-controlled?
I believe it's, um, the rent control applies to buildings that are 30 years and older, so by 40 years, yes, they will be under the rent control ordinance, as it's written today.
Right, because I think it was 40 years. Right. But I don't know that we have looked at that in terms of a town, or maybe we have.
Not, not yet, no.
Just to clarify, I mean, I would have to go back and look at the ordinance. I thought it was all housing built before 1987 is subject to rent control, and after that it isn't.
Then, I, I'm not that familiar with it.
Yeah, I thought the statute was in 1987, and to encourage the towns to build housing, they didn't want rent control to apply.
My understanding, and, and I may, my understanding is that, um, the state adopted regulations that said municipalities may adopt rent control for buildings prior to 1987, and if it's built after 1987.
And it doesn't apply.
It doesn't apply for the first X period of time, I think around 30 years, or at the conclusion of the first mortgage.
Okay, yeah.
And so, um, so I think a building post-1987 could still become rent-controlled.
Eventually, yeah.
Um, it's just, at the time they adopted the law, it was, it was 1987, but this leads to a question.
Just, just one thing, so the, all the buildings built before 1987, which are the ones that are older, that need repairs, et cetera, are all subject to rent control, you know, which, you know, I know, I'm a landlord, my insurance went up 25% in three years. That's happening all over, so the rent control doesn't pick up the true cost, taxes are going up, so these, and so I believe that these buildings, you know, how are you supposed to maintain them when you're not getting enough income? Anyway, but that's beside the point.
Well, it's not beside the point. That's a very important point, I think, that, you know.
But that's the thing, this document doesn't go into all the elements of housing in town. It's just gearing itself towards the fair share plan and, and responding to what we need to do for the state, right?
And that's because it's a statutorily driven plan, and we will have an opportunity to go into more other housing issues when we do the land use plan.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough.
Um, so say a property has a, comes on, online, new construction, has a 40-year deed restriction.
Right.
At the end of that 40 years, uh, the property deed restriction is off, but the property is subject to rent control at this point. Um, I don't know if that's actually true, but like, for the purposes of this thought experiment, would, and I realize you may not be the person to answer this, but would that unit, that affordable unit, then be subject to rent control and have to continue renting out at that lower controlled rate?
And I don't have an answer to that.
Yeah, but something to put out in the ether.
That issue has not come up.
Um, okay.
Now, that's, you're talking about rental units.
Yeah.
That may be, there's an issue with, with the sales units, the way that it works right now, um, when we have, um, affordable sales units, the state statute gives the municipality the option of first refusal, so we can buy it at that maximum, because even if the deed restriction expires, the property owner cannot sell it for more than the maximum resale price. So then the township can buy it for the maximum resale price, and then fix it up if it needs to be fixed, and then resell it as a, as a deed-restricted unit. So the sales units, we have a pretty good mechanism in place. It's a little bit more difficult with the rental units.
So I just have a question with respect, since you were talking about rental units. Um, so they become, what's the word? You're re-upped for being a, a.
Oh, we get extension of affordability controls.
Extension of affordability, yes.
If we can negotiate it, or do, do something with the property owner, yes.
So there's an amount that can be paid out of the housing trust fund to help.
Right.
Rehab the place, and then it goes into the pool for, you know, whatever it is, for 40-year deed restrictions.
Yep.
Right? So how is the upkeep of that? Who pays for that all along? So you have, you know, you initially put money in, and then you have this rent-controlled unit, I'm sorry, this affordable unit. The landlord then is expected for 40 years to keep that up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I think a, a theme I've picked up, and it's not a surprising theme, is that like, the, the board has concerns about gamesmanship, for lack of a better word, and, and ways to skirt the intentions of the, the affordable housing requirements. And, and I personally, I think the, the way we have handled it, um, most recently in this plan, I think does a pretty good job of that, right? The requirement that you need a special exception to pay in rather than build the unit.
Right.
That sort of thing, I think, does a good job of kind of preventing people from working around the edges, and so I just, the gamesmanship part, I think I identified, like, people don't like the idea that someone's getting away with something.
Well, maybe the town might like the idea that they could, you know, put affordable housing and get the money for the big, I mean, that's, you know.
So, so Carmel, if I could get back to your, your question about the extension of affordability controls, the idea is that once the affordability controls expire, that's the time for the owner to come to the, to, to come to us for rehabilitation funds, so we could tie the rehabilitation funds in exchange for, uh, the, the renewal of the affordability controls. So that's the whole idea about the extension of affordability controls. Right now, we give them $15,000. Well, that's probably not going to go far enough to update those units, but that's something, if you could tie it to a rehabilitation, because if it, the idea is that they don't come in the middle of the deed restriction term for rehabilitation funds. They come in when their affordability controls are expiring, and that way, you give them the money, you rehabilitate the units, and you reissue, re, reapply those, uh, those affordability controls, which right now are 40 years.
Just, just a question, so, uh, someone who owns, you know, affordable housing, will take HomeCor, can't they apply to the housing trust fund for, um, monies to fix up some of the units? Whether or not the deed has expired or not during?
Well, that's how I was doing it before.
Yeah.
The new regulations, which have not, these, the, the new UHAC regulations, which haven't been adopted, are, at, at, at least are tying it to, um, to the, the end of the affordability controls, but prior, what we were trying to do before, over the last five years, is work with HomeCor and give, provide the rehabilitation funds so that they can fix, fix up some of their units. It just so happened that quite a few of their units, they only had 10 or 20-year deed restrictions, and though, a lot of them were expiring anyway. But, yeah, that's what we did. Um, first, they were not able to tap into those funds for various reasons, but we certainly designed the program so that they could.
Are, are we able to develop, um, can, extension of controls at any number lower than 40 years? So you have a sliding scale where, for a five-year extension of controls, you can maybe get $15,000 to rehabilitate a unit, and that would tack on to the end of the pre-existing 40 years, and like?
For us to, for the, the way the regulations work, you, you want to get credit.
Mm-hmm.
For every unit where you extend the affordability controls, you want to get credit.
And if it's less than 40 years, you don't get credit?
Well, no, they say that the combined deed restriction should be 60 years. So if it was 30 years before, or if you extend it for 30 years, then that's okay. If it was 20 years before, and we have some that are 20 years, then it has to be an extension of 40 years. As long as the, the, the prior term of the deed restriction plus the extended term of the deed restriction equals 60 years. That's in the, actually, the law, the new fair housing law that was adopted, so that's not even question, you know, that's not even in the works, that's what's in the new law.
So it's not necessarily, it couldn't be done, but it's that the township wouldn't get an affordable housing credit for it, and so that's not necessarily the best use of limited affordable housing funds?
Okay, and, but are we still counting credits here, since that we've met our requirement? This is what, you know, I'm kind of interested in.
I don't, I don't think I would recommend that the township advance a program that does not create credit-worthy units, because that could change, and you don't want to spend your money to create a unit that you would not get credit for as an affordable unit.
Well, you might, just out of the, you know, just because you want to, the upkeep on housing, yeah. I know, I sit, I'm, I so, know what you're saying, but.
I'm not saying we can't do a rehab program. The rehab program only has a 10-year deed restriction.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
Okay, there's, we're talking apples and oranges here, the normal rehab program versus an extension of affordability controls tied to rehab program.
I'm going to jump right in with another question.
Please do.
Yeah, I've, I've read different things about if you have faith-based housing, and it's affordable housing, is that affordable housing subject to property taxes? And you said to me, it's not.
No, I said, yes, it is.
Oh, sorry, it is, it is. Excuse me, but I read that it's not, that the charitable organization, the church, can set it up so that if they build totally affordable units, they might not be subject to property taxes.
Not to my knowledge.
So, yeah, so I think we need to clarify that point.
So the ultimate determiner would be the tax assessor.
Yes, of course, right.
Um, that being said, property is assessed in its use, not in its ownership, and so if a property is used for affordable housing that nonetheless has a certain market rate, right? Like, it, it, it very well could be subject to taxation.
Or not.
It, it would be up to the assessor and the particularities of the circumstance, but, um, yeah, it, it's, it's, it's not, whether it was owned by a faith-based organization or not, right? It would be treated the same because it's affordable housing.
Yes.
Not because of who the owner is. And so any affordable housing, you could have the same question, because it's the use, it's a consistent use. Um, the ownership by a faith-based organization is.
It's not necessarily faith, but it's a nonprofit.
Right, but the ownership by a nonprofit organization, it's not really relevant, because exemption is based on use, it's not based on ownership. And so the question is, it's open for any use that is affordable housing, not just those owned by nonprofits.
Right, right. And so you think they're taxable.
I can't hear you.
So they're, in your view, and you're a tax assessor, affordable units are taxable?
I, I would.
Likely.
Likely?
Likely, yeah.
Likely assess it. That being said, right, significant numbers of affordable housing projects come with alternative financial arrangements, whether it be pilots or something else.
Right.
Um, and so, you know, it's, it's very common for that to be another mechanism to ensure that there's municipal revenue without trying to do the, the, the work of figuring out the market rate value of an affordable unit and, and all that, right? And so there's a lot of pilots involved, and in affordable housing construction, too.
I guess I'll send you the information that I got that said affordable housing built by faith-based or nonprofits.
Where did it come from?
It came from ChatGPT.
I can't, I can't hear you.
It came from, no, no, it came from, they give the citations of the law, and I'm not about to go into all of that, so, you know.
I would say, caution, it's important to note, like, property taxes are very distinct for each state, and so ensuring that.
Yeah, it's New Jersey.
It was focused on New Jersey, okay.
Yeah.
Other questions, concerns, things to discuss?
Yeah. I have everybody else, but I do have to move in down.
I'll take this moment of quiet to, to make a note on, um, the conversation we've had, um, in watching the, the meeting last time. Um, there, there was more discussion of parking than I, I, I love to see for a housing, um, element, which may surprise no one here, um, but I think it's really important to, one, note that housing imposes, or parking imposes a significant cost on providing affordable housing, both capital A affordable and lowercase a affordable, um, and it also contributes to a lot of the quality of life concerns that folks have about housing generally, and specifically affordable housing, right? Our communities aren't feeling cramped and choked by the people there, they're feeling cramped and choked by the cars. Take, for example, Mission Street, or is, Miller Street, where, uh, HomeCor is proposing adding new things. The road is very narrow, and it's got a lot of cars on it, and that's what makes it feel uncomfortable and congested. It's not the people living there. And, and, and so I think it's really important that we, we keep that in mind, and, and beyond that, while there are certainly many people who do rely on cars, and cars are obviously necessary part of our transportation ecosystem, um, having a parking spot is not something that is necessary for everyone, and imposing a cost on whoever's providing the housing, whether it be an affordable housing developer, or the township, or a market-rate housing developer, of providing that parking spot is then transferred to all the people who need that housing. And so whether it be Lackawanna Plaza, where we're building hundreds of parking spots at a cost of 20, 30, $40,000 per parking spot, or even to the ADU ordinance where we require a parking spot, um, that's a significant cost and imposition on people, and makes housing, both capital A affordable and lowercase a affordable, um, more difficult to achieve for everyone involved. And it's something that then forces those who don't have cars and don't rely on them to subsidize everyone who does have a car. And that's not best practice, in my opinion, and, and not fair as well. Um, and so I just wanted to take that opportunity.
I'm not understanding the last part. I'm not understanding the last part about how, how that, um, then we, we all have to pay for that.
But, because anyone who, say, lives in Lackawanna Plaza, right, and is like, I'm going to be on top of a grocery store, and half a block from the train station I go to, and, um, you know, in, in, able to get anything I need from Amazon, who doesn't have a car, in their rent is going to be paying for the $40,000 parking spot that we forced them to build, because, and they're not, they don't have a car, they're not going to use a car, they're not going to use that parking spot, but they are subsidizing every other car that will be using it within their rent, because we forced them to build that parking spot. And it just, that adds up, right? It was $40,000 times 900 spots, and, and we're talking real money.
No, okay, I, I understand that, but I certainly think that the benefits of having people that have a parking space outweigh whatever that cost is, because every time, you know, we're forced to figure out a new plan when the snow comes, or, you know, when people are trying to pick up the trash, and folks are parked on the street, or on the sidewalks, or in the front lawn, even though we have an ordinance in place that says we don't allow front yard parking, then, then that, there's a cost to the township, there's a cost for us, and we have to deal with that. So I understand what you're saying, but I, I do think that that's something that's necessary now. I think that even when we have been very generous and not required, uh, whatever that magic number is, we've said, well, you know, we'll be generous and let them not have that, we always end up, at the end of the day, having to deal with that, you know, we, all of us, and it becomes a problem on the other end. So I would rather err on the end of people knowing that they have a parking space and dealing with that, and whether they then are able to rent that to someone that's looking forward to something else, I haven't figured out all of that, but I just think that it's very necessary right now that we continue to have a parking requirement for, for a lot of different reasons.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying this plan should, should suggest eliminating parking minimums, um, and I'm, I'm not even necessarily speaking to the merits of that policy, but, um, I think it's important when discussing the costs, right? Parking is a major cost, and, and, and while there are certainly complications with, um, managing parking, when we set aside public space on public streets to cars, right, that does make trash collection more difficult, that does make snow clearing more difficult. When we build very large parking garages for municipal purposes, right, that's a huge cost on the municipality. I don't know what share of the debt is the Midtown Deck and the Crescent Deck and all that, but like, we're going to be paying that off a long time. Um, and, and, you know, the usage of that is, those parking facilities is. And, and, you know, the usage of that is, those parking facilities is, is not a hundred percent-
Right.
Nearly any day of the year.
Right.
And, and, and so, we're paying for that all the time those lots are empty, right? Every time the Midtown Deck's sitting empty, that's, that's something we're paying for. And so, I, I, I understand that there, there is a cost to folks having to struggle to find parking, right? I have a good friend who is very grateful for the recent change in overnight parking permit rules because it has made their ability to park their car a lot easier. But that ease also does often encourage people to have a car when they may not otherwise need it, right? And I think that's something to consider, right? People do change their behavior when, say, parking becomes more difficult, right? When it becomes more expensive. And that's not something for us to ignore, that, 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 that has an impact just as zoning has an impact, and just as our rules around affordable housing have an impact.
But yes, yes and no. I'd just like to respond to that last part where you said parking, people change their behaviors when parking becomes more difficult. So, when, and I sat on the committee along with Counselor Williams and Counselor Toler to provide overnight parking for some areas that, you know, said that they really needed it.
Yeah.
Not so, because some of those houses along Willowdale Avenue, they have driveways that are very, very, very long and then swing to the backyard, and they could have found parking. It did not change the behaviors of those people. They didn't want to be inconvenienced to get up and move a car, or do this, that, and the other. So it doesn't always change the behaviors of people. If they think, if they come in and complain and say, I have nowhere to park, I have to park overnight, people are gonna just do that and not come and do what I did, which is go and look at the driveways and figure out, yes, you do have parking here. So that didn't change their behaviors, they just didn't want to be inconvenienced, and therefore, they came and made it our problem to find a parking on the street for them that will then inconvenience others on another way. So it doesn't always change the behaviors. I'm sure sometimes it does, but a lot of times it doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, it, there's, there's different levers, right? And depending on how much you pull on that lever, it, it may change their behavior. And so, if, if the town's selling a parking permit for, I don't know what the price is for a month, but-
Forty-five dollars.
Forty-five dollars a month, right? That forty-five dollars a month may make it worth it to them to not have to jockey cars-
Right.
-in, in the driveway. But if it was four hundred dollars a month, right, which-
There you go.
-is, is real money, right?
There you go.
That, that may change their behavior, right? And, and, and so, I just think the, the, we don't need to assume that we can't have an impact on how people get around town, how people park, how people use their cars, and whether they have cars, right? Like, the decisions we make impact that. And I think that's one of the reasons our master plan said, however many years ago, that we have parking minimums more like a car-dependent suburb than the dense railroad suburb that we are, right? And I feel confident saying that that has meant more cars on our roads, because we've included parking in project, uh, projects that may not have otherwise required as much of it.
Since you mentioned it, also.
Is there a recommendation to add parking into the housing element? No, I'm just, I, look, I don't wanna cut anybody off.
If we're talking about less, sure.
Well, because I, because I feel like we could-
We're talking about more.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Because I feel like we could talk parking off a very long time. Unless there's a recommendation to-
I didn't know what you were responding to.
No, no, and I appreciate everyone's comments. I'm not saying anybody's wrong, I'm just, if it's not being recommended to include it in this element at this point, I would say, let's move on to a different topic. We can debate, and I'm sure we'll debate a lot about parking when we go to do our land use and circulation element-
Yes.
-later this year, early next year.
Yep.
So, I apologize for being a little late here. Actually, I was dealing with the situation, the growing situation of unhoused residents in the community, and so I apologize, not knowing what was previously discussed. I'd just like to say, for the record, having been through this plan many, many times, I am very much in favor of a lot of it. I'm, I stand strongly in favor of the faith-based opportunities for affordable housing. I stand in support of those in terms of just general affordable, in terms of seniors, in terms of supportive housing, artist housing, whatever it may be. I think that that's something that I'm looking forward to, and I hope that others here would also encourage that. That does everything that we would like for it to do in all of the wards. It, you know, provides opportunities for affordable housing from Ward Four all the way to Ward One. And, yeah, I think a lot of the people that may be interested in that, they've already had an opportunity to speak to neighbors, they've got a group of people who understand the importance of providing, you know, shelter for our neighbors. Who better than our faith-based group individuals? So that's something I'm very much in favor of. Regarding the transit-oriented, in transit-oriented affordable housing, I would like for us to really do as much with that as we can. I think that, you know, we've had some conversations, maybe not as much as I would like, about possibilities of doing more development in the Wachang Avenue area, maybe increasing density around that transit area. And I'm very interested in the transit development that we have that was for the Bellevue Avenue transit area, and I'd like for us to pull that out and, and just take a look at that. I know when I said that, people were saying, oh, parking, what will you do, where will you park people? And that's, you know, parking is always a problem in everything we do in the township. There are, you know, two areas of parking in Bellevue Avenue, and I'm sure if there was a will of the people for us to add, you know, whatever, whether it's one or two units at that location, or whether it's more, I don't remember the exact plan that we had, Janice, but whatever that is, I'm sure if there was a will of the people to go into that neighborhood and provide affordable housing, we can work it out, because we're really good at working out things in Montclair when we want to. I love the idea that I think, Janice, I think it was your idea regarding the ACME as an area to be considered. I like that a lot, that's a lot of space there, and some things that we can do there. So I'm very interested in that. And regarding whatever types of zoning that, that we need, and I think zoning is gonna be the key to doing some incredible things moving forward, so that we can take and just find zones to do supportive housing, co-housing, and those things that are so, 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 so much needed in Montclair. Housing for people that have mental illnesses, we can work, you know, as we normally do in collaboration with the Montclair Mental Health Association to provide more wonderful, you know, townhouses or other types of housing. We've, we've got something in Montclair already to demonstrate how wonderful it can be and how it will not change the character of the neighborhood. Yes, the neighbors will come in and say, oh, no, it's gonna change the character. We can demonstrate where it has not happened that way, and it's really been a blessing to our community to allow for homes for people that are, you know, mentally being, receiving, in, in need of still receiving services. And artist housing, we don't have any artist housing in Montclair that I'm aware of, we talk about being a community for artists, and I would like for us to, you know, try to find some types of zoning to provide for that in, in all areas. So, yeah, those are the things that, that just, you know, immediately I looked at and I was excited about it. Pretty much, I'm in favor of what we have here, I appreciate, you know, the time that everybody is, is put into this and discussions that we've had, and, so, yeah, that's me.
Anyone else with thoughts, comments?
Oh, yes, I have one more, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, well, it's fresh on my mind, because I just came from the meeting. The other, the other thing that, that I think we need to, to discuss in more detail, and we will discuss in more detail, is locating areas for our unhoused residents, and trying to figure out what that looks like and not just dismissing it, and giving it a lot of thought. And as I become more aware that some of our feeding programs in the township are actually regionalized already, for example, one of our programs has an agreement with Bloomfield, and they have an agreement with West Orange, and as we're talking about, we're seeing more and more people coming into Montclair from different places, I kept saying, oh, wow, see, a lot of people coming from Bloomfield and a lot of people come from West Orange. I didn't know why at the time. I'm saying, you know, I get the Bloomfield thing, right, because contiguous, but I couldn't quite figure out the West Orange. And then recently, when I found out that there is a feeding program that has a regional agreement with West Orange and Bloomfield, then it would make sense that we are getting more and more people from those locations. I have not done the data, I, I have been many times and spoken to the residents and just, you know, what, what my eyeball, but I don't have any data, so please don't think this is necessarily data-driven, this is Renee's data-driven, and other people have seen the same thing. But it made sense to me then that if we have feeding programs that are providing regional, then whether we may be in favor or not, we may be essentially providing already for a more regionalized type of housing for unhoused resident by virtue of the feeding programs, because if people come and say, oh, this is a really nice neighborhood, you have trees and grass, and it's very peaceful here, and I can sit on the sidewalk and let the wind blow, and nobody's gonna come and, you know, accost me in any way, and then they might decide to stay in this wonderful neighborhood that we, we all know as Montclair, and so we may be getting some numbers there. So, we have to have those conversations, and I hope there's things in here that will provide for, you know, the unhoused more. Are there things in here that jump right out that you think would be very helpful as we look to figure out what we're gonna do with our unhoused population?
I think that that would fall under the generic term for supportive housing, because quite often, housing for the unhoused is transitional housing.
Okay.
And the category of supportive housing includes transitional housing.
Then, then that's terrific. I, I remember reading through that, I just wanted to make sure in my layperson's vocabulary of our unsheltered residents that we are providing, because I see that as becoming a growing situation, not problem, but growing situation that we're going to have to deal with. So, I appreciate you for including that. Now I'm done, thank you.
You missed the beginning.
I know, sorry.
As long, no, no, as long as this takes tonight, we're here. So, I mean, look, I'm, I'm happy if this is short, but if people have things they want to say, now is the time. So, the one thing I, one thing I did want to raise, and we, we have the number about subsidy for an affordable dwelling unit should be about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, like, my one thought on that is, should that get recalculated annually?
Yes.
Based on RS means?
Yes.
I would add that recommendation in here, that that gets periodically reviewed, I suggest annually.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, so it's not, so we don't get stuck again with this one static number for the next ten years.
And I, I personally believe that two-fifty is too low. I own a three-family house, typical house in Montclair, and it's, nothing special, but it's a replacement cost, which would be pretty much the cost, Tony, you would know this, to build something, is one-point-three million. So that's like, each unit is, you know, four-hundred-thousand dollars or so? So that's a better number. But I know we don't access that number very often, but I still think we should put in a higher number and put a cost of living, or whatever you want to call it, a-
Right.
-a factor in there that'll automatically be adjusted.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Neiman. I know, something we discussed at the, the first meeting, and it's, it's around the rooming house conversions-
Yep.
-and just possibly finding a way, because likely if they're converted, they'll likely end up with fewer units. It also negatively impacts that naturally available affordable housing that, that rooming houses provide. And so, finding a way and seeing if we can work through the plan to either get rehabilitation of those rooming houses independent of adding a kitchen to qualify as of capital A affordable housing, or even just making sure we take steps to protect that naturally occurring affordable housing. Because I'd hate for us to, in the effort to get credits, take the one-hundred-and-thirteen rooming house units and knock it down to ninety-five, because then we've done good, but we're also now-
Right. The issue is, if we use affordable housing, under the old regs, if we used affordable housing trust fund monies for, to, to rehab units in a rooming house, we had to add a kitchen and bath. However, the new regs, the proposed new regs, these are not the Fair, Fair Housing Act regs, this is the, the uniform housing affordability control requirements that are proposed and not adopted. The proposed regs do not require the kitchen and bathroom, so we'll see how that shakes out. We may be able to, to apply that to rooming houses.
Awesome. And so, just, there's the sentence in here about with investment in additional kitchens and bathrooms, these units can be really rehabilitated to create new affordable apartments.
We can add if necessary.
Yeah, if necessary, or, you know.
What page is that?
Uh, that's page thirty-seven. Because I think those are truly an incredible asset that Montclair is lucky to have.
Just a question while you're looking at that, what happens to the current tenants in those units while they're being rehabilitated? Is this something that, does the housing trust money allow for a payment for a transition place? You know, it probably doesn't, but I'm just throwing that out there anyway.
No, I, I think it depends, that, that's site-specific. I mean, if certain projects, they might be able to relocate, if they have any vacant, vacant units, they can temporarily relocate them while they work on one unit.
But that's hypothetical, right? There's nothing built into the code or anything.
Could we examine whether we could use affordable housing trust fund money to provide temporary housing in those circumstances? Because I know, or I recall, that was a big concern with the purchase of the rooming house.
I know, right? I'll have to, I'll have to look at whether-
And so, examining that could be a really good idea.
Yeah, Airbnb, you know, short-term rental.
Typically, those are the, whoever the developer is, is required to pay that cost. So, I'd have to find out-
Well, it's not even the cost, it's just making sure they have a place, just don't put them out in the street, right?
There is a cost, of course.
No, no, of course there's a cost, but, you know, you, you just want to take care of it.
Okay.
Other comments, questions, changes?
You know, I do have changes, but, you know, not changes, but like, some little edits. You know, we talked about some of them, but you didn't, you had a question about some of my suggestions.
Right.
So, is now the time for that, or I guess it is?
Yeah, if they're beyond what was-
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I just don't want to, you know, be nitpicking about stuff.
Otherwise, I feel like someone's gonna move this, so.
Okay, no moving this, okay, yeah. All right, so, C draft, page two, okay? Yeah, you didn't understand my comment about the, the first paragraph in the introduction section. It currently reads, number one, outlaw the use of zoning tools to prevent low and moderate income households in municipalities. That shouldn't read that way. It should read outlaw the use of zoning tools to prevent the construction of low and moderate income housing in municipalities.
Okay.
Okay. I have, I mean, anybody else can jump in, I do have some more things to talk about. Okay, so, on page, I'm sorry, page, 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 page. Under substandard housing, page eleven, but it might be a different page in the revised packet here.
Yeah, some of the page numbers are different between versions.
Substandard starts on twelve.
Twelve here?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you make the statement that high housing costs are a serious problem for, particularly for low-income households and households of color, but you don't have any income data to support that. So I would just take that sentence out, and you can just start, well, higher interest rates, you know, blah, blah, blah.
I don't, I don't see where you're, you're under the first paragraph on page twelve.
I'm under housing affordability.
Under housing affordability, so midway down.
The first sentence there, I would delete that sentence.
The first sentence?
Yeah.
I think that's accurate statement.
But you're, everything else here has like, references and all of that, we don't, there's nothing here that we're, we're, we're doing race, uh, income by race.
Well-
So I would take that out.
I think it's generally recognized.
Yeah, I, I would leave that in.
All right. I didn't know what you meant here. It's the same substandard housing, the sentence was unclear to me. Okay, you're saying overcrowding is defined as more than one person per room. This indicator increased by twenty-one units in the last decade, sorry. This indicator is also used as a measure of affordability. Households add more people to the households must-
To meet housing.
To meet housing costs. I don't know what that means.
They take on roommates, they, because they can't afford to pay the rent. They take on roommates. Because they can't afford to pay the rent, they take on roommates.
But that's not clear. You might want to expand on that a bit.
I think that's exactly what it says.
Well, what if you're a family? You're not taking on more...
What page are we on?
We're under substandard housing.
Page 12.
This indicator is also used as a measure of affordability. And the indicator is overcrowding is defined as more than one person per room.
Right, so they...
So this indicator is also used as a measure of affordability. Households add more people to households must live in one unit. I don't...
I mean, that's why the federal...
All right, I'm not going to argue with it, but to me, it makes no sense.
Maybe just put a parenthetical that says, e.g., adding a roommate.
Yeah.
Just so it's a little clearer as to what an example of that is.
Okay.
I think the sentence that's, I understand the point being made. I think the sentence that leaves me a little confused is, this indicator increased by 21 units in the last decade. This indicator is also used. I think, could you say, Montclair has 21 more units deemed overcrowded or considered overcrowded, and this overcrowding is used as a measure of affordability?
Sure.
Yeah.
Is that clear?
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds fine.
Right. And I find the measure, I don't know, so it's one person, it just seems like, I mean, I grew up in a, you know, basically a tenement with three bedrooms, and a living room and a kitchen, and five people. So I was, I didn't feel overcrowded to me. So I don't know where they're getting this from. Just a comment. It's like a suburban outlook or something, rather than a person who lives, who lived in, you know, crowded houses.
I think it's also reflective of modern trends, though, because I don't...
Not in, not in, you know, the places where there's people living. It is, I mean, it's effective in modern trends, because every time we look at application, it has to have two bathrooms and two bedrooms and...
Yeah, that's what I mean. Like, the expectation of living space available for someone who's not rent burdened is greater, right? The number of couples that don't have kids who have a two-bedroom apartment so they can have an office, right, is far greater than what it perhaps used to be.
Yeah.
And so, yeah.
Just our standards have changed.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, anybody else, feel free to jump in here. I'm just going through my items. Oh, Janice, I still object to changing from average and median. You have to stick to one or the other.
I've got it.
You can't do the comparison if you're not...
Yes, you can. There are two different sources. The federal government gives me the mean. This tax assessor, when I asked the tax assessor, what is the, what is the, what is the cost of, he gave me an average. He didn't give me the mean.
Yeah, but you can't, then the whole paragraph doesn't make sense, because you're not comparing the same...
They're two different sources.
It's not about the source. It's about how you're looking at the number.
The tax assessor did not give me the mean. The tax assessor, I mean, I can just get rid of the fact that the tax assessor says the average cost, the average value of a house in Montclair is, what, 1.3 million dollars? But I did have the conversation. That was the number that he gave me. He didn't give me a mean.
Could you ask him for the median?
I mean, Thamar had the same question. It wasn't just me.
What?
Thamar had the same question.
Where are we?
I understand that. My answer is the same.
Where are we in the document, just so we can all look at this and try to get to a decision?
Okay. I would, if it's going to be an issue, just take it out.
Well, no, but let's, let's do it in a informed way.
Yeah, that was on the former ones. Maybe it's page 14 or so.
It's on, let's see, page 12.
12 of this one?
Yep. I just said, in comparison, the average equalized assessed value of a single-family house in Montclair in 2025 is 1.039 million dollars. That's at the end of paragraph one, the third paragraph. And that was based on the tax assessor's calculation.
My point is, you can't make a comparison between averages and means.
So my, if that's an issue, we take it out.
Yeah, take it out.
Sorry, when it says, the median single-family home was 850,000 dollars, is that the, oh, the median value? Never mind.
Yeah. Yeah. That's just, that's data from the American Community Survey. So if everybody's in agreement, I'll take out the tax assessor's information.
That's fine. I don't feel strongly one way or the other personally, so that's okay. So we're at the point, Vice Chair Graham, if you have any questions, comments, things for us to discuss, we're just throwing them out there at this point.
I just had a question if we were including Mr. Scott's surveys from last week, or if we were discussing that, his suggestions.
Topic hasn't come back, hasn't come up yet.
Hasn't come up yet? Okay.
You can bring it up.
Yeah.
Well, I would like to bring it up. I guess I would like the board's opinion on...
On what?
Whether to include the charts that Mr. Scott had suggested be included.
It's in there.
Oh, it's been included.
Yeah, if you look, I didn't put it in the executive summary, but I put it on, in terms of the table of permitted uses in the residential zone districts.
What page do you want that?
That is on page, that's that chart, the Ps and the As and the...
Yeah.
Page 49, where we talk about residential zoning.
So I had a question about that chart.
Oh, there it is.
Okay. If I'm looking at it right, so looking at group homes, for example, so they're permitted use in all zones, right?
Right.
But they can only be, hold on, maybe I'm not, permitted use, group homes in all zones.
Is this the one where we discussed adding a legend as to what these?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It wasn't group homes. Sorry. Oh, forget it. I'll sort it out there.
Mr. Ewan?
Yeah, I've got one suggestion in the summary. When the plan talks about the types of opportunities that the town may include, this goes back to my comment before about for newly created, especially redevelopment zones, where the town is essentially, we talk about value, when the township rezones a property through a redevelopment process, it has the ability to add value by increasing the density. So that's value that's created solely by the act of the government. And capital will flow to that because there's additional value. And I think that historically, we've gotten more units out of redevelopment zones, although they may not be in all the areas we want. So I think that stating one of the goals or the opportunity would be the appropriate use of redevelopment zones to create opportunities for developers, and also not to come off those goals, because when the capital flows to it, there's your money. And, you know, back to my comment before, if we get money to do something, it's harder to do it just with the money. But if you get a housing unit that's built, it's done, at least for the 30 years. So I think that's where...
What page are you on?
Page one.
The first page. It says, the opportunities include properties owned by houses of worship, adaptive reuse of obsolete, non-conforming, changes to use or occupancy of rooming houses, or the stuff by HomeCor.
So how about, how about, Tony, something along the lines, continue to, continue the appropriate use of redevelopment?
To include affordable housing.
To create opportunities for developers to provide affordable housing?
Well, not to create an opportunity. I think their opportunity is to build the thing, but to mandate that affordable housing be required. And, because it is covered here, the 20% to 25%, because that's where the township by, I don't want to use the term upzoning, but you are, in most of the redevelopment plans, more density has been created by doing things like actually reducing parking requirements.
Yeah.
Because there's shared parking. That's been included in that. You know, the RSIS parking requirements were modified and decreased the parking requirements. So, you know, theoretically, making those more efficient and more adaptable.
And the master plan basically says, like, we'll trade increased density for other public benefits. And you could easily make the argument that the affordable housing provided is a public benefit. And so that's like, that's well contemplated.
Yeah, I'm probably not explaining it right, but basically, the opportunity is just to do the right thing when you, you know, you create the redevelopment zones.
I think...
And I think, but make that, that should be listed with the others, I think, as an opportunity that we, you know, kind of stay focused on that.
So you want to say you want to, you want to encourage having areas in need of redevelopment?
No, no, but when there is one...
Make sure they have affordable housing.
Yeah.
But, okay, because you're saying that the zoning is erased when it's an area of redevelopment.
Yeah.
And has its own zoning, so...
And values being created for the benefit of, you know, hopefully, the town and the developer. So when capital, I guess what I'm saying, when money flows in, that's when you want to be able to allocate that capital to the best use for the town.
So what I'm hearing is a new, add an additional goal, to continue the appropriate use of redevelopment to create opportunities for affordable housing.
Yeah, because that's where you have the ability to include as a zoning requirement.
Okay, we can add that.
Yeah, that's a good one. And, you know, you said it before about making the 20%, 25%. And I agree with you there. I think we should leave that at 20%, because we've never used 20, what, we used 20% once? Every one of those developments, it's like 10 or maybe 15?
No, no, no. Actually, 20% has been, been...
What?
Every, in the Eastern Gateway, it's all been 20%. So, and in Lackawanna, of course, it's 20%.
That's the only one I'm thinking of, is Lackawanna. But you listed them, and all they're all...
Right, so the one, the one...
They're all 10%.
The Vesteri's at 20%, and so is Montclarian, too. Those are both at 20%.
I think it's also kind of, those projects are sort of to the side of the inclusionary zoning ordinance, because they aren't subject to the 20% because of the inclusionary zoning ordinance. They're subject to the 20% because of the redevelopment plan.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, you know, regardless of whether it should become 25% or not, we could make the inclusionary zoning 25%. But if it goes to a redevelopment plan, that doesn't matter.
Right, it doesn't matter. And just might, want to reiterate, the set aside is still 20%. It only goes up to 25% when it's a use variance. So that's, that's, it's, for the most part, if the use is permitted, it'll stay at 20%. It's when you're asking for the additional benefit that triggers the use variance, that the affordable housing requirement escalates from 20% to 25%.
And what would be the example of that, of something that we've looked at, where that could have worked out?
Okay, if somebody comes in, if they come in with a density variance.
Not here. We don't handle change of use here at the planning board.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so the zoning board, excuse me.
The zoning board in adjustment.
Yeah.
So that's, that's not something we've seen?
Right.
And just to be clear, that's the recommendation in this element. That's not what the IZO currently says, right?
This, this one?
That the 25%...
Oh, that's, that's my recommendation.
That's a recommendation based on, here. So that would have to be enacted within an ordinance.
Right.
Could flow into a redevelopment plan, but just so we're clear about what we're talking about.
Right.
Mayor?
I have a question, please. Can someone explain to me what the discussion was that I missed about the additional development on property owned by HomeCor to create 100% affordable housing? What, talk about any numbers or anything? What was that discussion? I'm sorry, I missed it.
We didn't discuss that.
Okay, so can, yeah, so I'd just like to have the discussion and try to figure out. It's just broad-brushed, so I'd like to figure out, I mean, I'd like to put some limitations on there, and then I'd like to try to figure out, does that, are we committing to any resources, or we're just saying, if they can come up with the money, then they can do that, or what exactly we're committing to here? And I think that's important, because I don't want to have anything that seems as though we are not being fair in terms of equal access to whatever our resources are, say, the $2 million that we have or whatever. I think other people, other than just HomeCor, should also, you know, feel as though they have an opportunity to come forward and, you know, be evaluated for their projects as well. So I just want to know, what are we committing to here with that HomeCor? In your mind, Janice, or other people, what are we committing to?
I think what, we're not committing to anything at this point. This is, the idea is to take a look at these properties to see, because we've been requested, you know, that they are interested in additional development, either on these properties or under the adjoining properties. And all we're committing to is taking a look at them. And that, that, if any additional development does occur on those properties, it would have to be 100% affordable.
Okay. But, so we're not saying anything further than that, like, we're not committing to helping them by giving them money? Because I know there've been a lot of different discussions about where the money could come from, and, you know, I think that's a good question.
I think we've...
And it's a fair question. So I'm just wondering, in this statement, are we...
The financial, the financial discussion is really at the extension of affordability controls. This plan identifies, because there's, again, 62 units that they own.
Uh-huh.
If you look at the, at the last page, page 62, you'll see between now and 2038, 40 of their, the affordability controls on their units expire. Now, some of them are after 2035.
Correct.
But we're just identifying that those are existing affordable units, and we're recommending that the township work with HomeCor to extend those affordability controls. And as we talked about earlier, I believe, Mayor, before you were here, tied to that extension of affordability controls is funding to help rehabilitate those units.
Right, so it is tied to funding.
Our, that's our, our ordinance right now provides funding, payments to extend affordability.
That we would be responsible for.
Yeah, coming out of the Affordable, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Then I would like to open this up to other people other than HomeCor, additional development on property owned by other people that want to create 100% affordability. I just, in my mind, as much as I support...
I think it is.
It is.
But why are we then just saying owned by HomeCor? Why are we just picking them out? Why are we not saying owned by anyone that wished to come here and jump in?
Because this is, this is focused solely on the extension of affordability controls, and those 40 units whose affordability controls are expiring. We have other programs that are recommended in here, rehabilitation programs, the market-to-affordable program, programs set aside for supportive housing.
Right.
100%, and another program for 100% affordable housing. Those are all other funding streams from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
So all of the, all of the people that have things that are expiring can do the same thing?
Yeah, right.
Okay, and they can then come back in with 100% affordability. And then, then we're moving a little bit away from our desire to have mixed, mixed-use housing for a lot of positive reasons, and I thought, then if we're going to start giving people opportunities to just come into Montclair or extend their affordability by now giving them 100% affordable units, in my mind, I just, this is just so far away from what makes Montclair special in the way we do affordable housing. Once we start coming in with 100% affordability, especially if we're not going to put a cap on units, like, if you're talking two units or four units, it's not going to make the same difference as if you're talking about larger numbers of units. And then you're talking about building projects. And so I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, what it is that we're really opening the floodgates for.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the units would have to be 100% affordable because they'd be coming from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, right? Like, the money would be coming from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
In this instance, also, because they're asking to build additional units on...
Right.
And I think, again, it goes back to the public benefit. If they want to build an addition, say, an ADU behind one of their, one of their buildings, I think that that additional unit shouldn't be market rate, it should be affordable, you know?
Right.
Because this is our affordable housing plan.
Right.
And that does fit with their mission.
Right, but that, that's different when you're talking about one unit, even though I'm totally opposed to sticking ADUs in areas that are already very heavily, you know, density and don't have large, palacious backyards for barbecues and family gatherings. But that's different. That's what I'm saying. Is there a cap on the number of units that anyone that wanted to do the 100% affordable can? And if not, it may be helpful, because, you know, I don't want... And if not, it may be helpful, because, you know, I don't want it to turn into lots and lots of just all in one clunk, everybody in, you know, 12.
You make a very good, a very good point, and that's why I recommend coming up with tailor-made zoning. This overlay zoning?
Uh huh.
The township's in control. So you, the township, if you want to work with them-
Uh huh.
It's not, they're not developing it. We would develop the overlay zones for what we feel is reasonable. So if you feel, oh, and this, we only think that two units will be, will work here, based on, and you'd, we would, my envision is that we would do an analysis-
Okay.
And you, the planning board and the council, would be part of that analysis. If you didn't feel comfortable with it, then it, we wouldn't move ahead.
Okay.
Because we're creating the overlay zone.
All right.
Their other option is if we don't do that, then they have to go for a variance, you know, a use variance before the Board of Adjustment.
All right, and that, this overlay zone is spelled out where? It's in here somewhere, because I know we've-
It's the, the-
Where's the overlay zone? Can we put a little bullet down here or somewhere? Where is that in here?
Well, it's, it's throughout the, the fair-
I know we had the discussions, I'm just trying to find out if, if I wanted to show that to someone, and later on down the line, when they're saying, nope, says right here we could do 100%, and it doesn't say what we can do.
It doesn't-
I can say, well, we have an overlay zone. Where can I point that out?
There isn't one.
Oh.
Because this, this is a, this document, as it stands right now, is ideas.
Okay.
Right? We're not, we don't, as the planning board, we don't have the ability to change zoning. We cannot, as a planning board, create overlay zones. That's the business of the council.
And we don't have the time either.
Can we suggest overlay zone?
Well, that's, we're, we're suggesting that there's a possibility of these here.
Oh, and that's understood, by the way, just by the way this is written, that's understood?
I, I think so. That's, we've been trying to work hard to craft that these are options.
Okay.
These are not necessarily recommendations, and that, you know, going back to kind of this executive summary here, where it's saying, you know, it gives us an opportunity to respond to opportunities that may arise.
Okay.
And these opportunities are the following.
Okay, I just, yeah, that's, yeah.
So that we, and the way I'll put it is, we've thought through the possibilities of some of these, but all of these are going to require a lot more thinking and consideration of one thing we talked about earlier tonight, balancing of public interests.
Okay.
Whether it's cost of affordable housing, it's stormwater, it's green space, it's all, it's infrastructure, it's all the different things that go into making a decision, all of that has to be considered for every one of these, and it's, it's, we're not at the point of being able to get there-
Okay.
-in this document.
Okay.
But we tried to stress that, and I think we're going to add a, a statement even up front, we talked about it earlier, to, to make that even more clear that-
Oh, gosh, I missed a lot, I'm so sorry.
No, no, it's, I'm glad you're raising it, because if you have this question, the public may have this question, other board members may have it. So I'm happy to keep going through it, because I think it's important, and I think it's intrinsic into what we've all discussed and what we want to see, because I think Council Lockman even said at one point earlier tonight, if we're going to make these are, these are definite things that we, we want, then certain people aren't going to support each of these options.
Right.
This gives us a list of things to think about-
Okay.
-in the future.
Well, it's definitely on my radar to think about, so, yeah, okay, thanks. When you explain it that way, I truly appreciate it.
Let me, let me ask a question in relation to support. So, the, the council is expected or asked to endorse this. What if it doesn't endorse this? What happens?
Then we submit it to the, to the, to the government without your endorsement.
Okay, and you, I guess you have any clue what goes on then?
Yeah, okay, just curious.
I think it's a new process, so we're not, we're not sure, because I don't think in the past, the council has, has-
Well, they have.
They have, okay.
They have, yeah. All the housing plans that I've worked on have included a council endorsement, but usually that's because, you know, they're facing a, if they don't, they get a builder's remedy lawsuit, so.
But here, because we have no obligation, we don't necessarily-
What you, what you have to do, what's important, and I'm going to, what's important is, what the, what is technically getting approved by the, the court? Because it's, it's, we submit it to the state, and we, we submit it to the dispute resolution court, is the spending plan.
Uh huh.
Okay, so all of this, we're not really proposing any zoning changes, we're just identifying opportunities, but at the end of the day, that they do have to approve our spending plan, and this provides the basis for that spending plan. And that's when the council is endorsing, the, endorsing the plan, really, you know, this is all very general, there's nothing too specific in the housing plan, but we're, the, the spending plan is a document that we will be submitting, and that's what you're going to be approving.
And if we don't?
Then I think that calls into a question whether or not our spending, I mean, are you, the spending plan is, if you don't approve the spending plan-
Yeah.
Then can we, we can't spend the money, you know, that's, I need, I need a, a resolution.
Okay.
Not only, and I actually should look at the language of the draft resolution, because you're endorsing the plan and approving the spending plan.
Okay.
At the same time.
And if you can't spend the money, the state will take the money, correct?
Is the council.
Or couldn't take the money.
They could take the money.
I understand that.
And the spending plan's not part of this document, the spending plan's a separate plan that goes to the council, correct?
Right.
Okay.
But it's keyed off this document.
Yeah.
It is.
Just want to be clear.
Good.
Who has what and what court?
I know.
Mm-hmm.
Good. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
My understanding of what we're doing tonight is finding if we approve the wording of this document, right? So if we could proceed with changing the wording that we want to change, go to page six, go to page nine, go to page whatever, then perhaps we could get an organized way through the document.
I'm on board with that. If people have changes they'd like to highlight, I think Vice Chair Graham's got-
Well, I would, I appreciate that approach, but I do have a more general question first. Apologies, Mr. Willis. I wanted to ask, some of the historic resources listed, like Applegate Farm, Martin Funeral Home, Mountain Avenue Train Station, as being identified as historic resources, that could be potential sites for affordable housing. I know the Mountain Train Station, I think, already has housing in it, but I just want to understand whether we need to include some kind of language that states that the HBC will still have oversight of those sites. I don't know if that needs to be clarified, I don't know if that's necessary.
Are they historic?
I can't recall if they are listed.
I think this, I think it's safe to say that the Historic Preservation Commission will have oversight, as you're, as you're currently empowered to do.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
All the plan is saying is that, for example, Applegate Farm is a use that is not in conformance with the zone.
Right.
And so, basically saying, hey, township, heads up, you've got this big piece of land that's not in a use that's the same as the zone it's in, so if redevelopment was going to happen, it's saying, hey, this could be where it happens.
No, understood.
And not like capital R redevelopment, lowercase r redevelopment. And so, the same land use restrictions that apply to any property, any given property in town, still exist even after it's been identified in this plan.
I completely understand that, and I know that this is a policy document, which is why I wanted to insert some kind of language that just simply states that one of the interests that we are balancing are also protection of our historic resources, and that they should be, any, I don't know if it's change of use, or any, you know, revision, or any development to these sites should be done in conjunction with, you know, the statutes that govern historic resources.
How about we put in, yeah, how about we say, any adaptive reuse of historic facilities should be conducted with the full cooperation of the Historic Preservation Commission as dictated by, by our, by our ordinance?
Perfect. That's all I would like, is clarity that that is a, a policy consideration, and something that the, that this document does take seriously.
What I really, what I really want to emphasize is historic preservation and his, and affordable housing can go hand in hand. You know, we can marry those two objectives and, and come up with a common outcome.
I 100% agree, and I think, you know, just, we talk a lot on the HBC about balancing interests, and I just think that that is an interest that should be highlighted as a policy-
Yeah.
-that we are giving due deference to, due respect to. And then, I just have one other question. I, I don't remember, we talked about the garages last time, potentially recommending, eliminating them from the demo ordinance for the HBC.
Yeah.
Did, is that still in this document?
Yes, it is.
Do we pull that out? I, I think we should pull that out, I'm not comfortable with that.
It's just for consideration.
I know, I don't think it should be considered. I don't think it should be considered, because, again, some of these garages are integral to the design of the home, they're, some of them are old carriage houses, some of them are, you know, built with materials that you can't replace, or they're built with designs that are very difficult to replace. We should take seriously the historic character of these places and let the HBC do its job. That's what I'm saying.
I'll defer to the planning board.
My question is back to the old question, where exactly did you want to put that?
I want to eliminate that.
What exactly did you want to say?
Where is it? Let's start with, where is it at the moment?
I don't recall what page it's on.
It's probably on the discussion of ADUs, which I believe is at the end.
I'm coming from coaching a Little League game, so I'm adjusting my backing.
I think it's page 62.
It's page 62, it's like the last paragraph of the plan. And I think it says, "One problem faced by several property owners is that adapting or expanding a garage to create an ADU often requires that more than 50% of the garage facade be demolished, which quite often requires approval of a total demolition permit from the Historic Preservation Commission. Garages that are demolished or altered to create an ADU should be exempt from the total demolition ordinance so that it does not prohibit ADU conversions."
Again, I think we can balance that interest with the HPC, so I don't know that I agree with this.
So you'd like to take out that sentence, is that the sentence?
I would like to take that out. I would, I would like to strike that.
The sentence that says, "Garages that are demolished or altered to create ADU should not, should be," you just take that sentence out, that would-
I would like to take-
-mean that they would come before you and get to do it in a way that historically was correct?
Absolutely, and, you know, the council always has the power at some point if the HPC starts to become a nuisance, and, because we certainly are not, mayor and councillor, but, no, we, we do try to work with applicants to make sure.
Maybe we should put in, may I suggest, language that garages that are converted to an accessory dwelling unit should be, should have, considered for special treatment by the Historic Preservation Commission? I'm just trying, trying to relieve them of what I've been told are unreasonable costs associated with doing a structural review, et cetera, et cetera. So if we can come to terms, you know, preserving, working with the HPC to preserve the integrity of the structure with the understanding that, you know, the applicant is, is really just trying to create an ADU.
No, that's understood. I, I mean, I'm having, I'm hard pressed to recall a burdensome application, but, thank you.
I think the application itself can be burdensome in some circumstances, right? And so, if you're seeking to, to build an ADU to, say, house a family member, knowing that you're going to have to go in front of a board is right off the top an added cost in a ready, cost-burdened process, right? Construction costs have become significantly greater.
What's the cost, again, for the, for the review, for the HPC, Janice? What's the, what's the, the fee, yeah?
The fee is, I think, $750. It's not a huge fee. The issue is, they have to hire a structural engineer, and then they have to pay for the board's structural engineer. So that quickly becomes close to $4,000-
Okay.
-to do the structural analysis.
That is-
All I'm trying to do is come with a little understanding, you know, of a pro, maybe a process by which the HPC can work with those owners without requiring, you know, all these extensive professional studies for a garage.
I know, the HPC has subcommittees, right?
But it's not, hold on, just before we move on, it's not just a garage, it's someplace people have to live, right? So, there is one application I do recall, where there was a structural problem with garage and the proposed plan, the design essentially left the structural problem in place. So, I, I, you know, they would have rebuilt the whole thing, and the garage would have probably rotted and fallen apart. So we need to be, if we remove this requirement, I mean, we're going to have to inquire about a place where people are going to live, and make sure that it's-
Is that your focus? I thought your focus was preservation.
Fair enough, you're right. We, fair enough. We would have to, but it's one of the considerations, though. So if somebody comes before us and says, we want to change our garage, we have a structural problem, and then they show us a design that still keeps that structural problem, it kind of weighs against making a change, right? Demolishing a structure when you're not fixing the problem you're claiming you're trying to fix. So it is a factor that we consider.
Does the HPC have something like the Development Review Committee, which is a lower bar to jump, that, you know, specifically ADU application and accessory structures could be provided expedited or lower impact review? And only with, like, special circumstances could it require?
We do have, that's exactly it.
Yeah.
We do have a low-impact review trigger, so maybe we could consider this a low-impact?
I'd be fine with that.
Okay.
Sounds reasonable.
That's reasonable.
So you're taking out the language, or what are you doing?
We're going to say, we'll consider it low-impact to reduce the cost for the applicants.
And they'll go for a low-impact review?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
If you, I mean, I think similar to the DRC, if you find something that's-
Yeah.
You know, really needs to be bobbled up to the, the whole HPC, then we all do that, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's very reasonable.
Yeah, I do, too.
So what is the wording now?
I didn't hear you, Carol.
I said, so what is the wording?
Oh.
Because that's the task we're trying to get to, to not getting this document approved.
Garages that are demolished, or, here, on page 62, garages that are demolished or altered to create an ADU should, not should be exempt from the total demolition ordinance, should be directed to the HPC's low-impact review. And I'll, I will flesh that out, but I think-
finesse the language a little bit?
Yeah.
But that's essentially the intent.
I'm going to go open up the code to make sure I have the right language. I might also reference the minor application review, both of those, so that we can facilitate these and not-
Makes sense.
Make, make it a little bit easier.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm perfectly fine with that, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I have, it's page 50, on the commercial zoning changes, and I know any kind of zoning changes would go before the council-
Yeah.
But you guys would recommend it, or, right? So I, I, I hear what you, I see what you're talking about there, but do you have any sample language or anything that you started to look at? You're pointing out problems with that zoning code.
Yeah, just, I'm saying that this, that's why we need to look at the zoning.
Okay, and so that's fine, you don't want to say, and here's what we should be doing?
I don't want to, I don't want to propose anything at this time.
Thank you.
I just think referencing a, a standard from 1973-
Yeah, 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 and I agree with you, and I think-
Is inappropriate.
But the chances are, we should get working on an ordinance for that, because, you know, things are happening.
You're absolutely right. It's, as soon, we got to get this adopted.
I know, okay.
Attitude, June 3rd agenda. Questions, changes, last-minute wording?
I had talked about the annual review, like a report on progress.
Yep.
Did we, can we incorporate something like that?
I think the statute, the new draft regulations require an annual report to DCA.
Okay, so we'll just give that to us, too.
And my suggestion is, I will provide it to the planning board and the council, that annual report. I have to figure, it's, it's an online, you upload the data-
Yeah.
-and hopefully, because they've got a new system, if I upload the data-
It'll spit something out.
It'll spit out a report.
Okay.
I'm hoping.
So I know, Thamar, Mr. Campbell sent some comments.
Right.
He's not here to ask questions, are you, have you responded and had a discussion with him?
I sent him my response.
And heard nothing?
To you.
Yes.
I haven't heard from him.
Okay, so we assume that they're been adjusted, so that's too bad.
Kind of, I mean, we're, A, we're in a time crunch, but B, we can't-
Yeah.
-wait for certain people in anything we do here.
Right, right, right. I was just wondering if you had heard anything besides this report?
No.
Thank you.
As, as much as I would like to, you know, be able to afford everybody input, sometimes it's just not possible. Okay, any, anything else?
Well, this, on page 15, there's just a small concern, it's not of the magnitude that deserves a lot of discussion, but I just wanted to change just a few words. We added a new paragraph to page 15, the final paragraph.
Uh huh.
And references the senior freeze program. And I would just presume that if we said that the seniors, the senior freeze program would go to the final paragraph and the second sentence, which begins with the senior freeze program, instead of saying it discourages seniors, that the senior sees, the senior freeze program assists seniors to remain in their home since their local property tax is frozen when they turn 65. I think that would be more appropriate in terms of attitude.
I, I, I very much agree that it is a, a big assist, but I also think the statement that it discourages folks from leaving their home, even when they want to, is something it does.
I don't think it does when they want to, that's what I'm saying. I think that what I've never seen, the, I've never talked to a senior who found this discouraging.
I've, I've, I've worked with some-
What it does is it allows for seniors who wish to remain to stay, and if they wish to go, it does not prevent them.
I, I've had some experience with folks who've wanted to downsize but risked losing their senior freeze status.
Yeah, and you know that there's, there's now an exception to that.
I've, I've, I've heard that, I haven't fully fleshed it out.
It's very vague what, what, how that is applied, but there is an exception, so if they do move and the taxes go up, they keep their base.
Yeah, and, and so, it, it's not, it's not a bad thing that it assists them, right? I'm very glad it assists them in staying in the community they call home, but it also influences behavior, right? And it can lead someone to stay in a home for longer than they maybe want to, because they don't believe they can find something as affordable elsewhere, even if it may better fit their needs, right? And, and-
Well, I'm, so here's what I'm wondering, can we, can we almost combine the two?
Yeah.
With, with, you know, the senior freeze program encourages seniors to remain in their homes if they wish, but also may discourage some seniors from downsizing to smaller homes since their local property tax payment is frozen when they turn 65.
Yeah, that's-
Does that, does that kind of cover both?
I'm not going to object.
I think you split the baby on that one.
Okay, I was like, but it kind of covers both points of view, and I, frankly, I don't know which-
That's all I, that's all I wanted to do, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I always, yeah.
Well, it's fine with me, I have no problem.
Yeah, because I think community continuity and keeping folks in their home is very important.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other questions? Do I need to go going once?
Gone.
Twice?
Gone.
Well, hearing nothing else, I think we've put in a lot of good work on this, I think there's a lot of great stuff in here, again, with, with some of these changes that we've made tonight, I think it makes it an even stronger document and kind of lays out options and opportunities for the township to consider moving forward. It also checks the box of something that we need to do statutorily, so I also appreciate it from that perspective. And, and so with that, with all the amendments and changes we made tonight, I would move approval of this.
Second? Oh, that was quick. So approval, motion by Chair Brodak, second by Mayor Baskerville. Do you want me to read the role? Mayor Baskerville.
Yes.
Mr. Graham, Vice Chair Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Ian Wally. Counselor Lockman.
Yeah.
Ms. Willis.